All right, I call the March thirteenth Board of Fire Commissioners meeting to order. Join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Seeing nobody in the gallery, I will assume there's no public comment tonight? Oh, and Mary was so kind and put correspondence on there. I was gonna make a motion to add correspondence. Nice thing, Mary already put it on there. I um, I have some correspondence that was, was sent to me and the two fire chiefs from Dan Carter. I want to share it with the rest of the commission. So I'm gonna read that right off of my phone. And uh, I want everybody to just kinda put this in the back of your mind and uh, put some thoughts together and we'll address this at our next meeting. But anyway, this is from Dan Carter. Gents, among the items we should discuss forwarding to the board of selectmen for the charter revision is the creation of an elected fire commission. Given the fact that the fire departments require significant capital, we should consider a commission that has adequate representation from taxpayers like the police commission. Of course, having input from the department is important, so the commission should include ex officio members. I would like to have your input on the concept best Dan. So, the current charter reads that, the Board of Fire Commission was established by ordinance in twenty twenty-one, see chapter thirteen of Bethel Town Code. The current commission, consists of five voting members, four of which are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and the fifth member is a selectman that is chosen by the Board of Selectmen. The commission also has two non-voting ex officio members, one from each department. Given the fact that the fire protection requires significant capital investment, it is appropriate to have elected officials working with the fire departments on budgets and maintaining budget oversight. Recommendation, add the following new section to the charter under Article Three, Elected Officers. Fire Commission. The Fire Commission consists of five voting members, each of whom shall be elected for a term of four years and two non-voting ex officio members, one from each fire department. The five commissioners shall serve overlapping terms at each municipal election. There shall be elected a sufficient number of commissioners to succeed each commissioner whose term shall expire. The ex officio members shall serve for a period not more, not to exceed four years, at which time the fire department representatives shall be such, shall be subject to reappointment. Said commission shall have the powers and duties as are now or may hereafter be conferred or imposed upon said commission by the Connecticut General Statute, Special Acts, or Local Ordinance. That's uh, that was submitted by Dan today. So, I just want everybody to kinda put that in the back of your head, kinda think about it and we'll have some discussion on it next month and get some feedback. My, my initial feedback to him, he called me yesterday and spoke to me about it. My initial feedback was, I, I kinda liked the way that the commission was made up now. Um, you know, we, and I, I mentioned to him, I said, we have one vacancy. And I, you know, the, we had discussions in the past about the selectmen's position being that the commission reports on a selectman. We didn't feel that the selectman should be on the commission, so if he wanted to appoint two members from the general public, you know, a, a finance type person and, and a taxpayer advocate, that, that was kinda my feelings and then keep the other three members and brought currently on the commission. Those were my initial thoughts that I shared with them.
We, we get a copy of that, so next monthly meeting, we have it here. We can all read it again.
Sure, I, I, yeah, I can, I just forward it to you guys. And you guys got it already, right?
Yes, I did. I read it today.
Yeah, so I'll forward it to everybody. And then the only other correspondence I had was from Doggo. I just said, he uh, texted me earlier today indicating that he will not be able to make the April meeting, and then he texted me again a short time ago, indicated he would not be able to make tonight's meeting. So, I don't know if we wanna consider changing the April meeting, or if we wanna keep it as scheduled. We can discuss that later, I guess. It takes care of correspondence. I get a motion to accept the correspondence.
I make you, I make a amendment, please, we accept the correspondence as Brett.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So carries. Uh, consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from February fourteenth. So, Rich was not there. You told me you get a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I read it. I, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as, as Brett.
Right, I'll, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? I think. One of us, one of us thanks. Chiefs' reports. That's what Chief McCollum indicated. He wanted to go first.
Sure. So, uh, annual ladder hose and nozzle testing will be May sixteenth. They come and they spend all day here. The annual hose, ladder, and nozzle testing will be May sixteenth.
You said May sixteen, Chris?
May sixteen.
Okay.
Believe it's Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
The tanker is out currently on its annual inspection and workup at GK. When that comes back, Rescue One will be the next one in line to go. We try not to leave them over weekends, so tanker will be back before the end of the week and Rescue One will go probably Sunday afternoon for them to get going on their Monday morning. We currently have two members in Fire Instructor Two over Brookfield. And we have two members in Firefighter Two up in uh, where the heck is it? Morris, up in Morris. Other than that, I mean, the budget is pretty much in good shape. I paid, paid for some of the gear. There's some more gear to be paid for. Other than that, there's been no major expenses since the last meeting. Uh, I talked with the chairman today about the Sopin uh, coming. Uh, they finally are gonna set that up. We have three dates, we have to pick a date. Uh, and the cost will be, including travel, is twenty-five, just under twenty-five hundred dollars. Budgeted is two thousand. And this has taken so long, as I explained to the chairman, he understood that they used to come out of Ohio, out of Sopin, out of Ohio, or out of Sopin East, out of New York. They don't do that anymore. Now it's MES, which used to be Shipman's, does this area. Yep. So, they contacted them for us, and then the gentleman there that handles it contacted Dave Evans, who's the chief engineer, to get everything set up. So, as soon as I know what date that is, I will let the chairman know. Other than that, we're good.
John?
Okay, uh, finally, I can say the camera project is done at Stony Hill. All the cameras have been installed. There is a monitor in the, the chief's office. DVR is all set. IT is now working on some logins for some remote access. Should have about approximately a fourteen day storage and overwrite. It's all working fine. The um, ventilation fans in the bays, one of them seized. So I've got the town maintenance looking at that. They're thinking about replacing all of them. They've not given me any quote. They're working with Bob Germer. He might have some fans they uh, isn't using in school systems. We might be able to talk something out. Um, other than that, we're going to start um, submitting some minor um, repairs that the building is showing its age, such as the uh, the cabinets um, to the town maintenance and see if we can get the, get those repaired. And uh, the classes that uh, Chief McCollum talked about, we have one uh, past chief Gallagher has taken the fire two instructor class. He um, doing well. We have one firefighter that took the fire one class in Bethel, had to retake the written, has passed the written. And we have uh, three people in the EMS class in Brookfield. So, education is going well. Uh, I think you wanted to talk about the chief's trucks.
Yeah, I'll bring that up.
About that, but uh, we just got in um, six new sets of gear to uh, six. Oh, we're watching for eight each other. We, we just got in six sets. That was thirty thousand. Um, we now have two of our message board monitors in place. We're waiting for the uh, vendor to set up the software. We still are looking to have one more monitor put into the community room, so we could have a message board in there. That'll be a little bit more geared towards the community and also recruitment. So it'll be different than the ones we have in the uh, firehouse area for us. Um, I think that's it. Everything else is going well.
Motion to accept the chief's reports?
Second. I make a motion, nobody accept the chief's report.
Second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So carries.
Okay.
Whatever it works. All right, uh, Chairman's report. I just wanted to touch on a few items, kinda let you know where we are with some stuff we've already addressed and some stuff coming up. Um, the operating budgets were presented to both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And then they go on their route, you know, and they'll be going to the public hearing. Uh, each, each department had their budget reduced by five thousand dollars. And that's coming out of a specific line item being turnout gear. The money is not being lost altogether. The, the five thousand dollars that was reduced is gonna be re-implemented through Arba funding. So the, the money,
Possibly.
Possibly. The, the money that you, you asked for, they reduced it by five thousand dollars in, from each department. And, and they're looking to replace the five thousand dollars each department through Arba funding. Uh, we, we presented the ladder truck for Stony Hill to the Board of Finance, or joint meeting on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. It was viewed favorably. The problem being is, you know, obviously there was a, there's a stock unit that's supposedly coming available from Pierce on April first. But uh, the town can't guarantee funding until the, the after, until after the April twenty-third uh, budget vote. So, in all likelihood, we'll miss out on that truck. The stock units seem to be gone within minutes or hours of them becoming available. So I've had some conversation with the town leaders and, and with Chief Baker, and, and the prevailing thought is that we're gonna try to chase stock units for a short time, whether, you know, be through, you know, uh, summer or early fall, see what comes available. Hopefully, we can get something done this year. Um, the town is still working on putting a plan together to fund it. They, they had some brief conversation with the Board of Finance Chairman, and he thinks they might add it as an advisory question with a, with a dollar amount on the, on the town budget this year. So that the funding will be in place after the town budget gets um, approved. But rest assured, there is support for it at both this commission level and the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. It's just a matter can we get one that's available in, in a short order? And how do they make the funding available? Obviously, the funding is, at the earliest, it's not gonna be available until April twenty-third. So, that's where we stand on the ladder truck. Um, next month, I wanna work on finalizing the, or our ten-year tire replacement plan. We had discussed that last month. You guys got me.
I talked to Brad already. As far as I know, mine is finalized. He's got it.
Yeah, I just, I wanna put it on paper so that this commission has it to, to refer to, you know, for both departments with dates of, of all the tires and for each vehicle. And then the Board of Selectmen and the Board, and Brad are gonna be looking to meet with the department heads to go over your entire ten-year plan. They're, they're gonna be reaching out to you and setting it up, okay? Um, I want, I wanna work on that, you know, start working on that. I mean, there's, there's a lot in the ten-year plan, and I have like four copies of the ten-year plan, and every one was different.
Brad has my current one, I can tell you that. Brad has. And I'll take it out for you.
Okay.
They get changed. As Brad explained to me, and I'm sure he's explained to Chief Baker, he wants things in there. That doesn't mean you can't change them as you go.
No, I understand that. I, I mean, there's, there's, there's stuff that should be in there, that's not in there, and I want, I wanna, I wanna help the Board of Finance and the Comptroller's Office kinda work on this ten-year plan. So, we gotta, you know, we get tires in there, we get apparatus replacement in there, you know, we get a list of, you know, when bottles, you know, SEBA bottles need to be replaced. You know, everything that has a life cycle that we know is gonna be a, a capital request. You know, I know you're looking down the road for Hearst tool equipment and, and the such, and just kinda wanna set those all out for, you know, the next ten years. So it's something I wanna begin working on in the next month or so. Um, we're, we're gonna, Stony Hill's command vehicle, again, was not received favorably. It was the presentation we put forth was rejected by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance at their joint meeting. They flat out said they will not fund a pickup truck by any means. Well, they will fund an SUV. And the cost needs to be significantly less than what was proposed. So, Chief Baker's working on that. Maybe he'll have some information for us that we can discuss going forward. And then the only other thing I have to report on was, I'm not looking for any rebuttal or any comment on this, but at the recent Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance meetings from both member, ex officio members of this commission and, and just general members of, of both departments, there's been some looks of disgust or head shaking, shoulder shaking. It, it had been directed to, towards the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. And it's not being received well, and it, and it's not helping your cause at all. So, just keep that in mind and maybe share it with some of your members. The, there's a process for everything that they do. I mean, you have to understand that there is support for a ladder truck just because you can't get a ladder truck on April first. Don't, don't get upset and start shaking your head and throwing your arms up in the air. And, and there was, there was some comments made after budget proposals. There were, there were some looks of disgust when there were some comments made by, by the selectmen. So, just take the information, share it with your members. And that's, that's all I have to say on that. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the chairman's update.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So carries. All right, consideration of revised proposal for Stony Hill's chief's truck. As I indicated, it was our last proposal, which was, I believe, our third proposal to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen took it and they sent it to the Board of Finance, and it didn't have very much, it was a joint meeting that they, they discussed it, and it didn't have very much supply. The only support it had was from Selectmen Strayton. The uh, feedback we got was they're not gonna support the purchase of a pickup truck. You know, initially, John had presented an F two fifty. I suggested trying to uh, save some uh, cost and, and reducing it to a half ton versus the three-quarter ton, and, and the feedback I got on that was, no, that's not the issue. Cost is the issue, but we're not gonna fund a pickup truck. Want them in an SUV. So, okay. And then, and then they, they have a uh, the cost of the upfitting of the vehicle is, is being strongly uh, opposed as well. So, I brought all that information to John. I, I understand John's frustration. He's expressed, expressed some frustration. Because, like I said, I initially had led him to believe that, you know, maybe we could get him into a lighter duty pickup truck, and, and that was not the case, and basically, without telling him, you'd have to get some pricing on an SUV and, and uh, reduce the cost of the upfitting. So, I know, I, John's working on that. If John has any information he wants to share.
Yeah, the um, recent parameters changed, so I didn't have an opportunity to get any pricing for the meeting tonight. I did reach out to the two um, dealerships that do give uh, state price bidding, uh, Congress Ford and uh, Sullivan Chevy. Um, what I was told was a Chevy Traverse is comparable to the Chevy, or the, excuse me, the Ford Explorer. And I was told that they are not taking orders anymore for the twenty twenty-four model. They will start taking orders for the twenty-five, but they don't have any um, idea what the price will be yet because they're still uh, too limited. Um, I can only work through email today, and I did not get anything back from Ford yet, so. Based on what I've heard recently, uh, availability on the Explorers is, is very tough to get ahold of. But I will see what I get tomorrow. I'm off from work tomorrow, so I can, I'll make some phone calls or make some uh, appearances in person for uh, some of the upfitting costs and try and redesign for a uh, small SUV.
Okay. Just for your information, I did a little bit of research, and, and, you know, this is not state bid prices, but the uh, the MSRP on, on the Diverse is about forty-two thousand, and uh, on the Explorer is about forty-seven thousand. You know, obviously, that's pretty state bid, so I think you might, you might be in line there if we find something on the state bid. And I think the state bid is, is roughly like twelve percent less.
Yeah, I think that's where it was, about ten percent for the uh,
So that, that, that might get us in the, in the ballpark of where we need to be.
What is the dollar amount that they're looking to spend?
They're looking to spend not a penny more than sixty thousand. They wanna spend about forty on a car and twenty on the upfitting. Or a combination thereof. They also made it very clear that they're not gonna spend sixty on a car and then try to sneak up fitting it into uh, you know, out of the operating budget. It's gonna be, it's gonna be done at sixty thousand dollars. And that, that's, it's gonna be complete. The, the only thing that we can entertain is in the future, we can entertain, you know, adding it to digital radio communications that John had talked about. For the time being, you'll have to take the really, like, either out of the current vehicle or something that may be in, in stock at, at the fire department. So sixty thousand. So, see, it's sixty, sixty thousand to, to purchase the vehicle and outfit it.
Total.
Total. So, I mean, I, I, I looked at the, the upfitting proposal that John had sent, and I mean, I, I saw a lot of room for reduction in it, and then we talked a little bit more last night, and I don't know how much that would affect the change, but even if we took the light bar off of it, which is, a light bar is where is it? Yeah, the light bar is, is thirty-three hundred, a little over thirty-three hundred dollars. We talked about removing the light bar and just putting the visor light over. I mean, I think that would be a significant cost reduction.
Market either. That costs money too, marketing. Costs a lot of money.
Yeah, there's, there's an allowance in there for that.
Costs a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That was always the thing with um, Selectmen Burke. He, he made it very clear that those vehicles had to be marked, right? I mean, I don't know how John feels about, you know, the vehicles lettered or not lettered. I mean, I, I don't know. I kinda think they should be lettered, but, I mean, the, the lettering cost is not that much, but, I mean, I kinda looked at it, I was like, I just, just for instance, I looked, I went through this and I was like, all right, siren speaker. Why, why do we have two siren speakers? Do you need two? I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm asking.
Yeah, two sirens. One is, is for the uh, lower frequency that they recommend now for uh, I think they call it a howler.
Yeah. So, I mean, is that necessary? I mean, if that's not necessary, I mean, that cuts the cost by two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and then I looked at the, the side running lights. I assume that's something to go along the running boards, some ones.
Well, it should have something on the sides for intersection lights.
Yeah, but I mean, do we need seventy-two inch, you know, side running lights on?
Well, you can, what the blades cruisers have, which is, you can do it in the windows.
Yeah, I mean,
Inside.
I mean, those were, that was, that was thirty-three hundred dollars, you know? And then I, I started looking at, you know, some of the lighting. I mean, you had, I don't, I don't know what these lights are. I mean, it's four-inch M power, red, white, and amber. There's ten of them. I don't even know what they are, but there's ten of them. I mean,
It, it creates a traffic device.
Who, who, who outfits, I figured I should know this. Who outfits in the squad cars?
I, I think Dean at uh, Specialty is the one.
I don't know.
And, and I mentioned that to John.
There's a lot of things you can do here without looking at my list.
We've got three, three different um, vendors.
Yeah, and John's gonna look at some of the other vendors, get some different prices.
Go back to Dean. I actually had some quotes from Dean prior to um, this point, but they were getting frustrated with me because we weren't acting on anything. So,
Well, this is, I'm sorry.
Right.
Well, we're, we're ready to act. We have a number now. We know if we, if we get in within that number, I'm told that it will be approved and you can get it the day, you can order it the day after it's approved. We'll come in under that number. That's the information that I have.
Do you, is there anything else after that? I gotta go pick up my daughter.
I, I,
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, we're just gonna, we're just gonna hash this out a little bit.
John, I'm getting what we can get.
We definitely wanna get them into a vehicle.
My one comment will be, there didn't seem to be any problem buying a Tahoe for the medics and upfitting it. And that cost a lot more than sixty thousand dollars total. I can tell you that.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know what, all of a sudden, the change is, um, the vehicles are ten, fifteen-year vehicles for us. I don't know what they are for the medics. But for the fire departments, they're long-time vehicles.
So, I, I, yeah. I mean, I understand everybody's concerns. I, I know we've, we presented this three times already. And I want the fourth time to be the final time.
Yeah.
And I'm being told that, don't come back with anything over this, or that, it's not gonna be approved.
But I do, I fully support John on getting whatever we can get. It's, it's time. The truck needs to be replaced.
Like I said, I mean, I, I got these, you know, these are pre-bid, you know, state bid numbers, you know, the forty-two and forty-seven on the Traverse and Explorer respectively. So I, I think we can get into one of those two vehicles for about forty.
What kind of option package did those have?
I, I mean, it was, the, the first was the LT, and the Explorer was uh, the XLT.
XLT. It's all batteries. It's, it's not, I'm not gonna go out and live here. You know, we have a volunteer, we have two volunteer fire departments. They're not paid. They do this in their spare time. I support going back and, and I understand that you met with the Selectmen and, and the Chairman of Board of Finance, but it's the wrong package for the, the fire department. Uh, they, they've asked for a specific thing, and they're telling the fire department what to put in those vehicles and how to use those vehicles. I think it's the fire department going through the Fire Commission uh, and asking for what they need, what their needs are, and, and we should support that. And we have supported that in, in the past. Uh, I disagree with downgrading the, the vehicles and the equipment that's in the vehicles. I comment.
Did you make that comment at the Board of Selectmen's meeting too?
Well, I supported it, but there's apparently, there was more conversation after that meeting.
Uh.
I mean, there, there are, there are several fire departments that are running Explorers as, as command vehicles. So I mean, that, it's not unheard of.
I understand, but
I don't know about Traverses. I know a Traverse is a comparable vehicle. That's why.
It, it depends how the Stony Hill Fire Department uses that vehicle. I mean, it's, sometimes you can't compare the, the different departments. You know, I, I, I thought the commission had voted to support uh, the Stony Hill Fire Department's truck and the, or response truck as, as the way it was spent. I, I, I know we
We did, Rich. We did, and it's been rejected three times. We can't, we can't keep putting the same thing forward and expecting a different answer.
It, it, it's not the same vehicle. It's not the same use that it's gonna get. And I don't think it would last as long. The current truck, yeah, what, eighteen years now?
Yes, nineteen years.
With, that, that's my opinion, sixty-six thousand. And I'll forward that to the Board of Selectmen also.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, and, and as, as is Tony. I mean, also, you know, I mean, keep in mind, Chief McCollum's been operating out of an SUV as, as if, you know, the past chiefs in Buffalo. I mean, when I first started out, I was operating out of a Chevy Trailblazer.
And then you didn't have anything for a long time.
No, I, no, I went, we, we, we went from the Chevy Trailblazer, and that's when we bought the Tahoe. I mean, before the, the Trailblazer, we didn't have, yeah, but it was many, you know.
I know you asked for many years for it there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was trying to upgrade from that Trailblazer to the Tahoe. I mean, I always, I always found the, the SUV to be adequate in, in my personal thing, so.
I mean, well, you know, Selectmen's I mean, well, you know, selectmen's, he's trading his comments is fine, but the board is adamant and the board of finances adamant.
Like I said, we've presented it three times already. And this is what they've come back with. Have it be an SUV and have an upfitting package.
Sixty thousand, cancel over sixty thousand.
Over sixty thousand.
I never heard him tell Bobby Dibble that he can't go over it's five dollars on a thumb trim.
What if it went to seventy five thousand? That could be a big issue.
If I was to be a betting man, I, I would say would not pass muster. You know, I mean, I, I mean, you know, if we, if we came to him and said, geez, you know, we, we cut here, we cut this, we cut this, we cut this, we cut this and cut that. And we got it to sixty three. You know, I mean, would that fly? Maybe, you know? I don't know. I mean, I my, my opinion is, or, yeah, my opinion is we should pursue either a Chevy Traverse or Ford Explorer. Or even I, the Dodge Durango, I think is probably is, is a little bit more. I was looking at those and I think that's closer to fifty thousand for just the vehicle.
What about the Tahoe though?
Oh, that's like fifty six thousand.
Just very state bid?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, John, I mean, John can certainly try.
I did not get a quote for the Chevy Tahoe only because the dealer talked me out of it, saying that I can get you a fifteen hundred pickup truck is what you were initially looking for, for less than a, than a Tahoe.
All right, and we, and we knew the pickup truck and then it was forty eight, forty, forty three. And we know a Tahoe is going to be more than four, you know, forty three.
And it is. Any of the equipment on the existing truck replaceable for the new truck or is it? I mean, on a temporary basis.
On a temporary basis would probably be the only recommendation that I would have because the equipment is all nineteen years old as well as the truck. So, um, the lighting package is strobe lights, which is obsolete and.
Yeah, while you have to.
Um.
Right, and then we're talking about throwing money, you know, installation money, you add it. And only to remove it and then pay installation money again. I mean, that, that's, that's cost prohibitive.
So when we were talking about what would the truck be worth after it was replaced? Um, most of that stuff may be able to be utilized by the highway department. Actually, a couple of guys at the highway department were excited about the fact of maybe able to, to use it because it's lower than the five fifties that they just got. That they could do something more where they take the bed off it because the bed is being held on by rust right now. And if they took that off, made it, uh, of a custom flat bed on it. Um, but then they can use the radio, it's not the highway. They can use the, the lights, just change the lens on it, so it's not the, the, uh, the reds.
But when, when you're getting prices on a new vehicles, ask for trade in price on, on the current vehicle. Yeah, that was something Brian, Brian, I mentioned. So I, I mean, what the town decides to do with the old vehicle when it all said done. Sign that at a later point, but let's at least have a, a, a number to throw back at them and say, we got, we got this down to sixty three and we got a two thousand dollar trade in, which makes it sixty one, you know? Whatever the case make it.
So this, so by next month, Chief, you'll have information discussed before the commission. And that this goes from the commission to.
Yeah, I mean, depends, depends. You know, it'll have to go to the board of selectmen again, who will send it to the board of finance. And I, I was getting John into a new vehicle has total support. It's just getting John into a vehicle at a certain cost is the issue. So if we come at them at sixty thousand dollars with a vehicle and, and outfit package, it's, it's going to fly through the board of selectmen. It's going to fly through the board of finance at their, at their next meeting, you know, after we present it to them, so. The sooner you have the information, the sooner we can make it happen. I mean, if you get information and.
Yeah.
It's in order and the committee this commission for a special meeting if they have to.
Yeah, it's, it's just going to be the availability vehicles right now.
Yeah. Understood. So nobody else else has any other further comment?
Oh, I have a couple.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I have. All right. Let's run this by me one more time with, uh, with the, uh, the budget, the referendum that's April twenty third. Right, the board, we're going to vote, you have a special meeting, the town meeting first to vote on the budget.
Right, yeah. Then you're gonna set a date. There's a hearing.
Right.
And then April, when's the town meeting?
Twenty third.
April twenty third.
Oh, the town meeting, no, the town meeting, I believe is.
The fourth, yes. And then the referendum is.
Twenty third.
The referendum.
Referendum.
Be the twenty third.
So when they do, when the town is supposed to go and vote, is there going to be a special spot to say the town of Bethel wishes to spend one point whatever billion dollars to purchase a ladder truck?
Oh, you're going back to the ladder truck?
Yes. Well, I'm talking about the budget, it's a, how's that going to be written up for the, for the taxpayers to see and vote?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that right now.
I'm not either.
I, the conversation I had is they're working on a plan to, to do.
It's, it's over, it's over a million dollars, so they have to have a referendum. So if they get it on this referendum.
Yeah.
Saying, yes, we will buy a truck for one point seven, right, when it's available.
Right. The initial thought was they were going to put it on as an advisory question. You know, you'll have the, the budget question and there'll be a, a second question. Shall the town of Bethel appropriate one point eight million dollars for a ladder truck for Stony Hill Volunteer Fire Department? So that is not definitive, but that was kind of the feedback of that's what they're leaning towards doing. I don't have a definitive answer for you.
But wouldn't that be accomplished on, at the, uh, town meeting? The public can come and make comments on them.
Yeah.
Well, you can make compliments.
When you're the sponsor.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know the honest answer. I've had conversation with the, with the finance chairman. He does that.
It saves a, a separate referendum that costs twelve thousand dollars.
Right, that's what they're, I think they're trying to avoid is having a separate referendum. So they want to put.
I'm not saying have, I'm saying it should be.
And that's, that's why we're not going to be, that's why we can't meet that April first deadline to get the, the current truck that's going to come available on April first. They want to try to put, you know, they're not going to hold a special referendum for just that truck.
Was there any discussion with the company about hold that for us?
Yeah, the answer was no.
The answer was no.
But they, they, the answer was first person, money in the contract is going to get the truck. If, if that's you on the twenty, if that's you on the twenty third, great, but it's not going to be.
We're fighting the entire nation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I just wanted to know how that's going to work.
Yeah, I, I don't have a definitive answer for you, but I, I did ask that very question to the, the board of finance. And the answer I got was, we think we're going to put it on the, uh, referendum.
Yeah, I was just confused because I was looking at, well, is this our opportunity to get, you know, uh, the town's, um, feedback on whether they're for or against it? Um, based on the knowledge of all of the development that's going on in the town.
Yeah, right. I think you're going to have an answer on April twenty third, whether they're paying a muster with the taxpayers.
But my other comment was, so basically, I've been saying this for forty years or more.
Five years.
Based on the cost of replacements of these, these apparatuses today. You're, the town has to set money aside every year to replace these vehicles. Or you're going to be going, no, no, no. You, I'm sorry, I look at you, but you're one of the selectmen.
Yeah.
So I'm just talking in general.
Yeah.
If they don't start it now, you're going to be in the same boat every year, every two years, whatever, to get another truck.
And that's why I wanted to work on the ten year plan.
Right.
So we know exactly what trucks and a ballpark figure on those trucks. Because the town is, is actually has, they talked about it a little bit last night, you were there, John. They have a, a, the board of finance has a plan to fund the capital non recurring. They're putting that some amount of dollars in each year. And they talked about the state money that's coming in that they're going to roll into the capital non recurring. So they're working on, on, on funding the capital non recurring. And that's, you know, that's why they want to meet with all the department heads all, all through all town to find out what the capital expenses are going to be. So that they can identify if they're funding the, the C N R enough or not. So we need to get them, you know, which trucks need to be replaced in what years and what that dollar amount is going to be, so.
They answered your question. We never got us satisfied answers. The, the assessor, they put fifty thousand dollars away each year for the revale. And so I don't know why they can't do that for trucks. I don't know, I don't understand why not.
You're not talking hundreds of thousands now, now you're talking billions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a million plus. And then you go before the board of finance and you tell them how much, you know, this vehicle costs, they're like.
Yeah, no, I, I.
And the brakes just, just stop.
Yeah.
So my question, what if we need a truck right away? What's going to happen?
We've, we've been fighting this, the same thing for forever, as long as, as long as we've both been around.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's a little, it's a little frustrating, you know, it's not like we're.
And I had that conversation years ago, a few years ago, when I was chief and the, the town was updating their insurance policies. And I said, you guys really should look at, you know, adding replacement value to the insurance policies on this truck. Because they don't have replacement value for, I mean, if one of these trucks was catastrophic, they lost in an accident or if they got, you know, got caught in a building collapse or something, they, they do not have replacement insurance, you know, coverage.
Purchasing some of these high priced, uh, apparatus, you gotta remember we're volunteers, not driving them every day. You know, there's people that go from their, you know, the small, uh, SUV or small car to driving a forty five foot long ladder truck. And may not have a lot of experience.
But we're trained in that, we're trained to drive the truck. We're trained to, to do that.
Right.
I'm just talking about replacement. I'm talking about, you know, we're, we're protecting the town.
All right, so did I answer, I answered the question as best I could?
I was thinking, I'm like, how they gonna do this? How they gonna?
So I, I think I'll make a motion on, on the chief's car. I'll make a motion that Chief Baker comes back to the fire commission and is earliest convenience with numbers for, uh, either a Traverse or Explorer or both and, and a modified outfitting package that we can forward to the board of selectmen for approval.
I'll keep you on.
All right, I second that motion. Seconded by Tony. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
So carries. Um, I'm looking for a journey.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so is there a second on it?
Second, second.
So.
Okay.
And I, I will forward to you guys, any.
Yes, please, that would be great.
We'll do that right now.